My name is Lo Van De Hall. I'm president of Carnegie Hill Neighbors. And I would like to welcome all of you and the candidates who are here to witness this candidate forum for City Council District Five. We are very grateful for our co-sponsors. We include Carnegie Hill Village, CitiTas, East 86th Street Association, Friends of the Upper East Side, and Health Advocates. I want to express our gratitude to the candidates here assembled. And you will each be given a chance to introduce yourselves, so I'm not going to get right into it. And we want to thank Roger Clark of New York One, who has so kindly agreed to be the host and moderator of this event. And I think we all recognize that New York City and especially this area faces huge issues. This is one of the most important elections, and so I think the candidates will speak to that. And we are all concerned about a better New York, which is on the horizon if we grasp it. I want to thank Joanna Colley for her fantastic job, our executive director, Joanna Colley, for the fantastic job she has done to organize this, assemble the candidates, and get the word out, and get Roger Clark to agree. And without further ado, I want to turn it over to you, Roger. And let's move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. It is absolutely an honor. I moved to the neighborhood, to the district, about 10 years ago from Queens. Sorry. That's where I grew up in Farmsteads. But I've grown to Lo's neighborhood so much, everything about it, raising my son here. And it's great. So, of course, I'm interested in everything you guys have to say, because it's my neighborhood here. So, that's it. So, let's talk about what we're going to do. Basically, we'll introduce everybody, give you a chance to kind of introduce yourself to the folks at home and everybody here. And then we'll have a little fun, a little quick little lightning round, just kind of talk about, you know, lighten things up a little bit. And then we'll get to the big issues, you know, recovering safer streets, zoning, land use over development, all the things that are really important to us here in District Five for the city council seat. So, without further ado, second, safer streets and quality of life question. And this is talking about short-term and long-term plans on petty crimes that degrade kind of our sense of safety in our streetscape. You have shoplifting, people smoking weed in the streets, public indecency, garbage, loitering, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, things we see a lot these days, it seems like, even in our neighborhood. How do you plan to help communities take their streets back? And we'll do the flip-flop with several buildings.
Great. So, to get real public safety on these types of crimes, we have to recognize that incarceration simply does not work. Recidivism rates are far too high when someone commits shoplifting, petty larceny, loitering, and the like. We do know, however, what does work. What works are programs for pre-trial diversion programs that help get people back on a better path. In fact, studies have shown that people who participate in a pre-trial diversion program for crimes such as these recidivate at a 2% to 3% rate. That, to me, if we're talking about real public safety, is real public safety. And by the way, think about the alternative. If we're going to incarcerate someone on Rikers Island, it costs us $1,200 per night to lock someone up on Rikers Island. There are better paths, there are better alternatives. It will save us money as taxpayers, and it will keep us safe truly as a city.
Rebecca?
Again, to me, the root cause of all of these issues is socioeconomic. And I'm not going to be here to ever criminalize poverty. So, if someone is shoplifting, I do support what we've done with bail reform. We need to be looking at the root cause, as I just said. We need to look at why someone is in this situation economically. Do they have good housing? Do they have a job? Were they able to get their high school diploma or GED? I personally worked with formerly incarcerated individuals, helping them secure jobs, within the Unionized Building Trades. And as Billy said, when you give someone an opportunity and create a different path for them, the cycle of recidivism is virtually eliminated. And that's what I want to be moving towards. Real public safety, where we're meeting people's needs in those areas instead of overpolicing our streets. And also specifically when it comes to cannabis, anywhere you can't smoke a cigarette, you can't be smoking cannabis publicly on the street. So, that's just about public education, in my opinion, not something where we're going to go around and re-criminalize people for something that's now going to be legal to do, starting in 2022, and has really harmed so many New Yorkers, not New Yorkers that look like me, white people, with data shows they're eating cannabis more, but Black and Brown New Yorkers that are largely incarcerated for it.
Julie?
So, one of the things that I think we need to recognize is public safety and meaningful criminal justice reform are actually not mutually exclusive. We can do both. One of the things that we need to get to when you're talking about, for example, turnstile jumping, public alienation, these are not being prosecuted by the DA's office. I worked extensively with the Manhattan DA's office. I don't believe that is honestly where we should be focusing. I think instead, what we should focus on is summer youth employment. Last year, the City Council cut over 70,000 jobs, many of whom went to at-risk youth. We need to reinvest into at-risk youth and make sure that it is a priority for the next City Council. So, that is how I believe that we need to do it. At the same time, of course, we need to support our small businesses. So, crimes against small businesses are an issue. We need to make sure that we're supporting our small businesses. So, I think it's really taking that kind of approach.
Okay.
Yeah, so first and foremost, what we say, that I think in terms of what our priorities need to be, I think the priorities need to be on things like serious crimes such as gun violence. I think that we need to take very seriously many of the hate crimes that we've been seeing in our community, particularly anti-African hate crimes, the antisemitic crimes that we've seen particularly over the last few weeks. And so, I do believe that that needs to be where our priorities are right now. In terms of the lower-level offenses, I know Rebecca already mentioned that marijuana is now legal to smoke as per state law. With regard to things like shoplifting, look, small businesses are incredibly important part of my platform, something that I care about deeply. We do not want to be hurting our small business owners who are affected by things like shoplifting. But I do believe, as Billy said, programs like diversion programs, which district attorneys and judges have the authority to put folks into, are a way that we can try to stop the cycle of crimes like these, rather than putting people in jail where they could potentially, you know, be subjected to more trauma, potentially end up, you know, doing these crimes even more. I think that we can cut down on recidivism by focusing on diversion programs and focusing on educating people, on getting them the economic help they need to move forward in their lives.
Trish?
Yeah, I think that the best way to reduce petty crime in our neighborhood and any neighborhood is to really create activated streets that people will want to be on. And that means really taking a kind of multi-layered intersectional approach, which is the type of approach that I would be pushing forward. I think that people want to be on streets that have open flourishing restaurants and small businesses. I think they want to be on green streets that have plenty of green infrastructure around. I think that they don't want to see garbage, and they want to have pedestrian-friendly, safe streets. All of those things are the intersection of transportation, small business, parks and open space, and so much more. And that's really the way I believe that we reduce petty crime. I think that's the way that we get our small businesses back, frankly. I think that's the way that intersectional approach, I think, best takes care of this community.
Chris?
Yes, I think it's really interesting to contrast this question with the last, in the terms of what you hear from my friends here, which is, you know, Julie and I have very deep disagreements on issues of policing, but when it comes to this issue, there's a lot of agreement across the board that we're dealing with a situation where children oftentimes are not receiving the support that they need, and they're heading towards these behaviors that degrade the safety of the community and frankly, themselves in danger as well. And as to that, it has a negative impact on the local economy when you're dealing with issues like shoplifting. So, we can focus on those core issues and ensure that we're properly taking care of our kids. That includes summer employment, includes summer programming for children, and it also includes a deeper commitment to fighting poverty, because poverty is the source of most of these problems.
Program according with each SNR, and they reported one crime, one crime last year. This is a good model that we need to copy. Their first goal is educating the public. For instance, they say pot smoking is legal in New York City, and the regulation is similar for regular smoking. If a person is a first-time offender, they let him go with a warning, and if he repeats, then he will be ticketed. The police office should carry on cameras at all times. In short, we need to emulate the Roosevelt Island Police Department. Thank you.
Thanks, Marco. All right, so we're going to go on to our next question and with the next topic, zoning land use over development, very near and dear to Carnegie Hill Neighbors, of course. So, we'll start with Marco concerning, now, we'll talk about the Longfellow New York Blood Center proposal over on E67. It's a lot, zoned for 75 feet. They want to build a 334-foot tower, which is tall. I'm betting that, but that's taller. If you're in the City Council, how do you work this type of project, this type of project like that?
This is why I am running for City Council, because my skills as an architect and planner and a community-oriented person, we need a comprehensive plan with accountability on the decision-makers. Once a district gets protected or has two protections, the opportunities to change it will be minimal. For instance, if a district has a cultural, architectural, and historical heritage status, it will be preserved and protected. Thank you.
Chris?
Oh, my gosh, where to start? First of all, we have this broken U-Lerp process that really just prioritizes developers, even though that's not the program's intent. We really need to work on that. But on a very personal, specific level for this community, you're seeing a lot of engagement around stopping this tower, and it's for a number of reasons. One, the Blood Center in conjunction with this development organization is essentially barreling over the community, which is something you just cannot do. And they're asking for us to violate an existing precedent, since we're mid-1980s, to put out this tower that essentially just adds more commercial space, is unnecessary, negatively impacts students with autism who are in an educational complex right across the street. So, my hope is that by the time one of us is seated next year, we're not dealing with this any further, because it's absurd that this has gone on so long. And I think what we need are people who are able to organize their communities well, who are able to get a lot of buy-in from local elected officials. I mean, Councilman Kalos has done wonderfully, and Carol Bonn has been working hard on. And I think we also need to continue to have this level of community engagement. Please come to community board meetings, folks, we need you.
Trish?
Yes, so I am currently the first vice chair of Community Board Eight. This evening, I plan on voting against this project in my capacity as a community board member, excuse me. And I was very proud that my community board already passed a resolution on this, passed through my committee, opposing this project just on the basis of its impact on St. Catherine's Park alone. Now, the question is about how do we fight this, and how do we get, basically, the larger City Council to see the meaning behind this? And that's really where coalition building comes into play. Now, the Blood Center project is most problematic in its precedent that it sets for zoning. The change from an RAP to a C27 would be catastrophic for other areas, not just in our district, not just in our neighborhood, but throughout the city. What they're trying to do is really trying to formatively change our zoning and how we think about preservation of our mid-block zones. And so, that's the message that I'm going to be bringing to the City Council and to my other, to other council candidates, that this could happen not just in my neighborhood, but in anybody's neighborhood, and we need to stand against it for those reasons.
Okay.
So, in terms of this particular project, I think Councilmember Kalos has been doing a very good job, doing what he should be doing as a council member, which is building community members' coalitions around this issue, gaining support, advocating not just among the community, but also among his council colleagues, who ultimately will have the final vote on this project, which should come to a vote sometime later this fall. And so, I think specifically, we are in a very good position in terms of who's representing us on this issue and the work that he has been doing to stop this project. I would say more broadly, we need to have a very extensive conversation about how, as we said, so much development in the city is developer-driven rather than community-driven, and talk about ways in which we can be proactive, talking about responsible ways to develop our community that don't rely on a developer coming to the community after they've spent years buying that property and accumulating air rights with a project that the community then has very little time to worry about and comment on. So, specifically, I think Councilmember Kalos is doing a very good job on this and more broadly. We need to have more community-driven development rather than developer-driven land use.
Julie?
Well, I'm completely 100% opposed to the Blood Center. And the question was, how do we fix it? This is an essence spot zoning, which is completely and patently illegal. And so, the problem we have here is we have a broken U-Lerp system. We have a land use system that is antiquated, that is broken. As a former second-year community board chair, I have seen this time and time again, where projects go through the U-Lerp system. Sometimes it gives back as a park, sometimes it's a school, sometimes a project is defeated, although not that often. And that is the problem, there is not sufficient community input. We have to reform U-Lerp, and we need to do it legislatively at the council to prevent these kinds of spot zonings from happening. This is, by the way, similar to what happened on East 58th Street, where the East River 50 Alliance, which has endorsed me in this race, fought against a tower and lost, and then they had to initiate their own rezoning of the area to keep that area contextual. Community groups shouldn't have to do that, the onus should not be on them. City Council has to reform U-Lerp legislatively once and for all.
Thanks, Julie and Rebecca.
How do we stop this project? Like we've already been doing, we organize as a community, we come together, we speak about why this is bad, why it sets a bad precedent for mid-block rezoning, the impact it will have on the educational complex, specifically the District 75 school for students with disabilities there, the impact on St. Catherine's Park. And for me, I'm an organizer by nature. I've led land use campaigns for the last 10 years on behalf of Unionized workers in a variety of industries. So, I know this process inside and out, and the solution to it is organizing with the council colleagues for why this is bad, and then also completely changing U-Lerp. Right now, the community is the first stop, and it's a non-binding stop. Our input, we are blue in the face, opposing the Blood Center, myself included, on the record, voting against it tonight as a Community Board Eight member, but we're advisory. The city doesn't need to listen to us. So, we're lucky to have support from Councilmember Kalos, from Manhattan Borough President Brewer, Congresswoman Carissa Baloney, Senator Kruger, Assemblymember Seeray. But if we didn't have that, we would be in a much different position. So, we need to continue organizing together, because when we fight together, we win together.
And last, Rebecca, this one, Billy.
Well, according to my answer, I first want to acknowledge Marco to mine, but I did mention my opening, but it's also on the Community Board of the Last Inferment, you might learn a lot on issues like these. Here's how we stop this project. What do the following four committees have in common? Community Blood Center of Greater Kansas City, Rhode Island Blood Center, Blood Bank of Delmarva, and the Innovative Blood Resources of Minnesota and Nebraska. All blood centers acquired by New York Blood Center without a single one needing a rezoning. Why? Because they have an endowment. They come to us for rezoning because they think they can print money out of thin air to get a form of corporate welfare from the city. I think that's wrong, and that's how we stop this. We make sure every council member throughout New York City's five boroughs knows that if this happens here, it's coming to your district and your borough next. We organize, as others have said, and we make plain that member deference, which is something that Julie and Marco and I think have some agreement on, you know, maybe it needs to be mended and not ended, but we can't get rid of it, because otherwise, we're not going to be able, in my opinion, to fundamentally stop this project. So, it's about organizing, it's about preserving the deference, and make it clear that this is corporate welfare.
Thanks, Bill. Lo warned me, we were going to be saying the phrase "U-Lerp law" tonight, right?
To spell it out.
It has become reality. All right, next question, same topic, you know, talking about land use and overdevelopment and zoning in the neighborhood. New buildings along the avenues east of Lexington Avenue have no prescribed height limits, although the avenues from Lexington to Fifth do. Should the zoning resolution for those avenue districts have a firm height limit? And if so, what should it be and why with several buildings?
So, I think the limit should be 210. It should be in the zoning resolution. This gets at something more fundamental, and something I think makes me unique on this stage. I believe I'm the only candidate proposing a fundamental rewrite of the 61 zoning resolution. The 61 resolution replaced the 1916 resolution. So, that was 45 years. Well, now it's more than 60 years. I think it's time for us to have a zoning resolution that reflects the needs of New York City today. The current resolution has been looming in thousands of pages. It's been mastered by developers and lobbyists. I'm not taking any real estate developer money or lobbyist money, because we have to take, we have to make sure we have community-driven zoning, and that starts with a community-driven rewrite of the zoning resolution that should reflect our needs, and then give us the leverage we need to get schools, infrastructure, and real affordable housing in our neighborhoods, not any more luxury superhomes.
Thanks, Bill and Rebecca.
On Manhattan Community Board Eight, I'm proud to have fought and supported the 210-foot height cap. I launched my campaign naming specifically the need for a 210-foot height cap. Before the Second Avenue subway opened, many developers wouldn't want to play in our neck of the woods, so to speak. They wouldn't come to the easternmost avenues to build. And now we're seeing ourselves inundated with large-scale development, tearing down walk-up apartment buildings like I live in, where our rent control and stabilized more affordable units are in the neighborhood for large-scale development. It's over 210 feet, takes our light, takes our air, and also produces unaffordable market luxury housing. So, we need a 210-foot height cap, and outside of that, we also need to be very targeted in the development we're doing, at 210 and below, to be sure that we're seeing much more affordable housing being built, because it's a false choice. When people say, "We have to upzone to get more affordable housing," that's believing that all new large-scale development has affordable housing. And from a decade of experience running land use campaigns and housing campaigns, that is factually not true. It does not improve the affordable housing numbers that we need to meet the needs here in CD5 and throughout the entire city of New York. So, we needed to understand what height cap, we need to be very targeted in development in general.
Julie?
I also agree that we should have a 210 height cap, and I think we need to reform U-Lerp once and for all. I've been speaking about this for almost 15 years. The problem we have right now is U-Lerp leads to unpredictable results. Every single time, you see a completely different negotiation and quite frankly, a totally different result. And we need to have a comprehensive master plan once and for all for the city. We are one of the few major cities across the country that actually doesn't do comprehensive planning. We do a piecemeal. It's totally illogical. When you talk to people from other cities, and you explain the land use process here, they scratch their head, it makes no sense, and yet, we keep allowing it to happen. We need a City Council that is going to step up and once and for all, demand to reform U-Lerp and demand a comprehensive master plan, which will deal with everything from light and shadow, but also building more parks, building more affordable housing, which is an urgent need for the community, and building more schools and so many of the other critical needs that we need throughout the Upper East Side, which is a dense and name on in City of New York.
Kay?
Yeah, so I actually agree with what Julie just said on the issue of a piecemeal zoning and land use. I think that is one of the biggest problems that we have, and I agree that we need a much more comprehensive plan. I would like for that plan to be community-driven. I've been very inspired by the folks in Warrington Heights, who have come together with elected officials and members of the community, and put together a plan that looks at all of the aspects of their community, so protecting renovated housing, figuring out where there are places where rezoning can happen, but also figuring out places where we want stricter height limits for various reasons related to that particular part of the community. So, that is the type of program that I would like to see us perform here in New York City and the Upper East Side. So, to the question of whether or not we need specific height limits, I do think there are places where that is necessary. Do I think that it is necessary all along the avenue? I'll be honest, I'm not sure. I believe that we need to come together as a community to look at all of our streets, all of our avenues, all of our side streets, all of our mid-block, and really figure out how we can be proactive in land use and development, so that we are protecting affordable housing and cutting back on developer-driven zoning in our city.
Okay, next on to Trish.
Yeah, so I am very supportive of the 210 height cap. I was proud, again, on our Community Board Eight to vote in favor for this. I believe I carry also with me the history of the 210 height cap. I know that we chose that number not out of thin air, but because that is what it is on Madison, that's what it is on Park, on Fifth, and this has been consistent. I also am, I'm supporting the 210 height cap, because I know that it's not just about the height of our buildings, it's about our light, our air, our environmental resiliency, which we hear every single time we're talking about this topic, about how these high buildings are taking away from all, from our overall resiliency plan. So, yes, I am in favor of it, and I'll continue to be in favor of it.
Okay, and from Trish, we go to...
Me.
Chris Sosa. Sorry. I gotta forget that. I had a minor lull, I was thinking, you got U-Lerp again.
It's okay. You've got a busy job. First, I think something that should be really reassuring to everybody watching this is how much confidence you're seeing on this issue across the table. And like those who have spoken before, I do support the 210 height cap. I really like Billy's extremely intelligent proposal about the resolution that we need to work on, because this is, as Julie was pointing out, the way that we're approaching land use in the city is so incredibly piecemeal. It's a free-for-all, and it's absurd, nobody wins. And as Rebecca was just stating, sometimes we're presented with this false choice, as though if we don't build these super-tall buildings, we're not going to have enough affordable housing. But the truth of the matter is, if we start building these super-tall buildings, it ends up being built with luxury condos. So, we're not actually getting more affordable housing when we do that. So, what we need to, we need to separate that kind of overly ideological fight that's happening around that one issue, because it's based on a false premise. So, I really appreciate her pointing that out.
And Marco, final?
Thank you. This is another reason why I'm running for City Council position. I have the opportunity to establish boundaries on the unprotected avenues. This provides an opportunity to build affordable housing and to protect the small business and especially the pop amongst the stones of our district. Yes, I am supporting the position of the community board in 210 feet high maximum on the unprotected avenues. The only thing I'm going to add is, I think it's wrong to start thinking to change the zoning resolution. I probably feel he never even saw what color is that one. Thank you.
Mark. Okay. We're going to make one little quick, we're going to jump to five, as we talked about a lot, and save that to the end. So, we're going to go to the next question, guys. By the way, U-Lerp, Uniform Land Use Review Process. For you folks at home, Uniform Land Use Review Process, U-Lerp.
You'll be dreaming about U-Lerp.
I know. Let's go to six. And this is something, as a parent of a kid, one of the few really cool open spaces is the field at Marcus Brothers Park. The Blasio Administration has declared that Marcus Brothers Park, known as jointly-owned playground, JOP, there's another one, located between 96th and 97th Street and First and Second Avenues, is not protected parkland for purposes of U-Lerp and state alienation legislation review. So, by implication, none of the other JOPS in the district, or the 268 other JOPS in the city, are protected with the result that the city can develop them or use the air lines at any time, right? So, should MVP and other JOPS be deemed parkland in the zoning resolution? And if so, would you support or sponsor legislation in the City Council to achieve this end? So, let's start with Marco.
Thank you for the question. Absolutely.
It's a big one, sorry.
Yeah, absolutely, yes. This problem is similar to the Blood Center proposal on the park, creating perpetual shadows. We need to establish a policy that the air rights from any open space must not be transferable. In full destroyers, I am a soccer player for many years on the park that you are mentioning, and the creation of shadows from the surrounding buildings during those snow days don't allow the snow to melt, and we are unable to play. Now, if this proposed out-of-scale building, we won't be able to use the park anymore during the winter time. Therefore, I am very happy to sponsor this legislation. Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, I think firstly, I'd say thank you to the Carnegie Hill Neighbors here, because they've been one of four groups that have already been advocating from an issue of the council in 2017, has actually begun the process of endorsing the position to end this alienation. But the short answer to your question is yes and yes. We need to protect our spaces, we need to protect our parks, and the Blasio Administration has proven itself incompetent over and over again, so it's a surprise to anyone.
Trish?
Yeah, so the short answer is of course, yes and yes. I echo Chris, and I'm glad you mentioned it, in talking about making Carnegie Hill Neighbors friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts and our other partner organizations that have been handling this fight head-on. I am the chair, the co-chair of the Parks and Waterfront Committee for Community Board Eight. When you talk of parks and open space, you're talking my love language. So, it could not get more personal for me. As a mother to a two-year-old, this is our, we need our park space, we need our open space. We know that when we talk about parks and open space, when we talk about the Esplanade, when we talk about Marcus Brothers, when we talk about Rupert, we are talking not just about pretty park space, we're talking about a key piece to our overall resiliency and sustainability. We are talking about pulling down our neighborhoods, which is especially important in a community that has over 25% seniors. We really do need every single inch of our open space, and I am going to do every single thing I can to preserve and protect every inch that we have of it. This is not something that is a policy for me, this is a part of my heart and my advocacy, and really where I would be putting my focus.
Thanks, Trish. Kay? Kim?
Yeah, so my answer to this question is absolutely yes. I actually have a good friend, Noah Diamond, who's very involved in the Marsh Brothers Appreciation Society here in New York, which is actually a thing. And so he's actually talked to me about this issue, because this is something that is very important to them, given the historical significance of that playground. We need to do everything we can to protect as much open space here on the Upper East Side as we can. We know that it is very limited. I was on a community board, actually a Parks Department meeting the other day that Tricia was on as well, talking about the renovations for Rupert Park. And when you look at the map, you realize that to get anywhere else to another open space or park, you're talking about a 10-minute walk, a 15-minute walk. For many people in this city, their parks are their backyard. It's the only opportunity that they have to let their kids go outside and play, to be able to breathe the fresh air. So we need to do everything we can to protect it. I would also say, given the renovations happening at Rupert, the notion that we would, you know, allow any kind of threats to any other open space in the city when that park will be shut down for a part of the time would be catastrophic. So we need to do everything we can to protect it.
Julie?
Yes, I totally agree with what has been said. And the problem is, is that the new space that the city would provide is legally not protected. That is a fundamental legal issue. This is a very dangerous precedent for all the JOPs and 268 that exist across the city of New York. Actually, if all 268 JOPs were developed with those air rights, it would account for between 20 and 40 million square feet of developable space. So we cannot allow this to happen. So this has set a really dangerous precedent for open space. We on the Upper East Side are the densest district in the city of New York. We have one of the lowest amounts of open space. So we have to protect every single amount of open space that we have. And I really, the groups that sponsored us, Friends and Carnegie Hill Neighbors and this for our society, which I used to serve in their board, fought this and did such a good job fighting it. But now we have a really bad legal precedent, and we're gonna need to fight very hard at the council level to increase protections to JOPs, to make sure this isn't an issue.
Rebecca?
Yes and yes. We have to protect our park space. We have so little of it here on the Upper East Side and throughout the entire Fifth Council District. So we need to legislatively fix this. We need to make sure that our parks are made fully public. And this question also makes me think back to the debate a few years back about building on Rupert Park, because the park had aged out of it being public parkland, if anyone recalls. I was at City Hall that day, or here, with a bunch of union members, and I was like, wait, hold on, everyone. This is my community. I live there. And so if we're not gonna be legislatively fixing this, it happened at Mark's Brothers, it was debated at Rupert Park, it can happen anywhere in the city, and we absolutely have to protect them. I'll also add that the development happening, but Avalon Bay, up at 96th Street, between 96th and 97th, is also very irresponsible. Avalon Bay is known to be a very egregious developer, to workers, to communities. They've exploited a number of communities throughout the New York City. There are a number of active campaigns within the labor movement against them. And so seeing our community come together to also oppose this on the park front is also just wonderful for me. It's quite intersectional.
Finally, Miller?
So my answer is yes. These are absolutely parks that should be deemed as such. Just think about this. If you look throughout Manhattan, according to the Furman Center, about 90, in most community districts, 99% of residents live within a quarter-mile park. In our community district, about two-thirds, 66%, live within a quarter-mile of a park. You're some of the least open space in the entire city. We have to do better. So it starts with saying that Mark's Brothers is absolutely a park. It's one and a half acres. I was looking at the Parks Part website the other day. Plenty of one-and-a-half-acre parks listed on the website across all five boroughs. But secondly, we need more parks throughout our community district. I'm a tennis player, but I'll just tell you, Queensborough Oval, it shouldn't be a tennis club, it shouldn't be a park. We need to make sure that the Rupert Park renovation goes forward. We need more dog runs in our neighborhood. And we think about the rising dog owners during the course of the pandemic. So we have to support our parks, we have to support our open space. It is key to making this a livable, thriving city. And I'm gonna fight for our parks every day if I'm elected to the City Council.
Thanks, Bill. Despite coaching a winless season in York Football League football division, I do love that, though. I have horrible memories, but it's still great. Mark's Brothers. We're gonna switch. Okay, welcome back. Wait, did we go over? Yeah, okay. All right, next question, guys. And we'll start with Bill again and go like around. Your position on planning together, I think Julie touched on the comprehensive planning for the city. Planning together, the comprehensive planning proposal initiated by Corey Johnson, the council speaker, are you a fan? And if so, is this the right one?
So while I agree with Julie that we need a comprehensive plan, I disagree with this specific plan I think we all made on this stage. You know, first, Speaker Johnson's plan is not adequate community input, requires three alternatives, three land use plans, but it doesn't necessarily require that one of them be a community-driven plan. So I think we need community-driven planning alongside the perhaps the 197A model. And what does that look like? It looks like actually resourcing community boards with urban planners and other experts to develop those plans. So that's number one. But what else do we need? What do I think the plan gets right that should be incorporated in a comprehensive plan? We have to align the city budget with the 10-year capital strategy. We have to align the statement of district needs that come from community boards, like the one I serve on, with the city's long-term planning. Right now, you do not have an organized plan, like most cities, or many cities, rather, around the country. And if we did have an organized plan that is community-driven, I believe that we would get the real affordable housing we need, the school's capacity that we need, helping our parks that we just discussed, and building the infrastructure that we need to be a 21st century city.
Rebecca?
We absolutely need comprehensive planning in the city, but I don't believe that Speaker Johnson's proposal is the solution to it. It doesn't go far enough on community input. We have to be binding. We must be the first stop and the last stop for input on anything. It doesn't do anything, honestly, on workforce requirements. I'm a proud union member, as I said, and housing development, development in general, can help put people back to work coming out of COVID. So it's unfortunate to me to not see the workforce that breaks out of this development taken into account in and at all. It lacks information on things like community land trust and what we do with our public land, for example, on how we ensure we have racial impact studies when we rezone in developing communities that are mostly black and brown or low income, because so often, the development we see there doesn't meet the needs. And when I think about those issues, I think about the Jerome Avenue rezoning campaign I worked on, the Inwood rezoning campaign I worked on, the Bedford Union Armory campaign that I coordinated, where I've seen how our lack of comprehensive planning harms communities and harms workers all around the city. And that's why I know this plan from Speaker Johnson is not the solution, and we need to be having more conversations in the next council in 2022 to address this issue.
Julie?
Well, as I said previously, I 100% support comprehensive planning. Speaker Johnson's bill, however, does not, as has been said before, give enough community board input. I'm a community board person. I chaired community board for seven years. I was one of the longest-serving Manhattan community board chairs in the city. And I do think that that really matters. That community boards matter, and you need to have local input. And my concern with this bill is that it doesn't really get a lot of community input. If this bill passes, and its future is uncertain right now as to whether it will pass, if it passes, it needs to be amended to then involve community input. So what does comprehensive planning look like? It starts with a master plan. It starts with a master plan for the city of New York. It then goes to a borough plan. So each borough has their own master plan, and it's driven by communities. So communities really have a say in terms of height, in terms of transportation infrastructure, in terms of parks, hospitals, and healthcare. All of these issues need to be addressed through comprehensive planning.
Kim?
So I leave it sound like a record, but I think I agree with much of what has been said. I fully support comprehensive planning. The piecemeal way that we do land use and zoning right now is ridiculous and allows developers to have far too much power in the system. But I agree. You know, I talked earlier about the Morningside Heights Coalition and the work that they did together, coming up with a way to zone their neighborhood that made sense for them, that helped protect renegated tenants, and really was community-driven and brought in all stakeholders. So I do believe that any comprehensive plan is going to need far more community input than this current plan puts forward. And the last thing I would say is that I think that it has to go even beyond community boards. You know, right now, it's a relatively few number of people in the community who can actually attend many of these meetings. Many have childcare commitments, many have jobs where they're working three hours. So I would like to see more of an effort made by the city to bring more voices to the table, reaching out specifically to folks who live in NYCHA, for example, folks who are parents providing childcare, and make sure that we are getting the voices of everybody when we're making these decisions.
Tricia?
Yeah, so similarly to everybody, how everybody else has said this, I do also believe that we should have comprehensive planning. I am not supportive of Corey Johnson's bill for a number of reasons, as I'm not gonna try to repeat what everybody else has said, but I'm just gonna point out a couple of other nuances here. One is the target goals. These are right now not clear whether or not they're restrictive or what they expect to see, and there is no community participation in that process. There's no real way to appeal early on for community boards or for any member of the community. So we are much later in the process, which is problematic. Finally, when it comes to what does this actually mean for us if we did have a comprehensive plan through the process that Corey Johnson proposed? And the truth is, is that it would be making it easier for developers to get their projects through the EIS, through the EIS process. If they are able to prove that it is consistent with the plan, then they are able to streamline and move after through it. That is not what we want to see here. We want to see power put in the hands of people. We want to see power put in the hands of communities. We want to make sure that we're taking away power from developers and putting it back into our neighborhood. So that's really where my concern is.
Chris?
My friend on the table was being incredibly diplomatic. This is a terrible plan, and we all oppose it. As Julie was just saying, if it's passed, we would just have to amend it later. And I'm not a fan of passing bills that are bad, that we then just have to, you know, essentially scrap and restart for amendments. And I think that my, to avoid repeating what everybody else has just said, my primary concern is about democracy. When you have de Blasio saying this just creates more unnecessary bureaucracy, you know it just creates more unnecessary bureaucracy. And we're dealing with a situation where we're gonna be putting even more power in the hands of people who are appointed, not elected. And I believe that when we're dealing with these kinds of, these planning issues, we need community input, and we need our elected officials to have more power, not unaccounted with your regrets.
Marco, follow up on this one?
Thank you for the question. This is why I am running for this position, because I have knowledge and expertise as a planner and as a council member. My participation would be important to lead on this plan, as well as I strongly encourage our community with participation in the plan. The crisis that we have is for two reasons. The city has been working with different plans that sometimes contradict each other. Second, the city council has been working with a deference clause. They give, this is your neighborhood, and this is my neighborhood, and that is wrong. Therefore, we have overdevelopment in our community. And in the other community, this investment, forming a disparity in the city that we cannot tolerate anymore. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the next question. And Marco, we'll start with you on this one. Again, obviously, this is a huge issue in this neighborhood, landmark preservation, economic development, big issues in Upper East Side. How will you approach the community board review process? We have a lot of folks who are very familiar with that process. Where do you think the issues of social equity and upzoning interplay in certain districts? And finally, here we go again, please describe your opinion on the U-LAR process and its carryout iteration. And Marco, please. John, you.
Thank you. Another reason why I'm running is because I know the Upper East Side history, which has, which was created for affluent people, and this enclave has to be maintained and preserved, its prestige and its status, because this is part of our cultural, architectural, and history of our city. Even though that the U-LAR process has some rationality, the final determination is in the hands of the mayor, because he appoints the director of city planning, the commissioners of city planning. And if the city council disapprove it, the mayor has the power to veto the city council's decision. Then the city council has another opportunity to challenge the mayor's decision. They have to have 75% of the council members in opposition to veto the mayor's approval. Then the city wins. Another problem...
Time.
Let me finish. Another problem, according to the ethical interest...
Just a couple more seconds.
The applicants hire the environmental company to prepare his environmental report. As a council person, I will correct it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You got it. Christopher?
Can we just let me finish now and then just go? We can implement that across the entire table. So bad. So this is a really good question. And it's interesting, because it comes back to something Rebecca first brought up earlier in the conversation, which is the tension can exist between upzoning and social equity. And as we discussed earlier, when we're talking about things like height caps in the specific setting, that isn't necessarily where the social equity problem is coming in. The problem is that the buildings aren't tall enough. The problem is that the buildings don't have enough affordable housing, and then we're creating new buildings. We're not ensuring there's affordable housing in those buildings. So it's a, it's a compounding problem that's not gonna be solved by making anything taller. And in addition to that, the U-LAR process itself, oh my gosh, I have like a page of notes here, so I'm not just gonna read them all off here, because it would take a really long time to...
Then you have to say, wait, let me...
Yeah, let me, yeah, okay. We need to pass intro 1572. We need to ensure that we're taking a real racial impact study into consideration. And you don't have to let me finish.
Tricia?
Yeah, so I really appreciate this question, because at the end of the day, it's talking about who has the final, who has the final say about the future of our community. And truly, again, I believe that that power, that say belongs in the hands of our neighbors. That does not belong in the hands of real estate developers. That does not belong in the hands of luxury developers, who would have to believe, as Chris and Rebecca already said, to believe in this false dichotomy that the only way that you can get a fraction of affordability is when you go high, dense. That is wrong, and I reject that dichotomy. I do believe that the one thing that we have, the one process that allows our community to have a say in our future, in our neighborhood, is U-LAR, period. And we need to do everything that we can to strengthen and expand that. We need to increase the ability for our communities to have a say in this. We need to increase what goes under the scope of an EIS, so that we accurately measure the metrics of what a development has in our community. We need to do everything we can to involve as many people as possible, because I believe that when our neighbors have a say and have a seat at the table, that's where we avoid it. That's where we avoid inappropriate development.
Thanks, Tricia. Kim?
Thank you so much. So I want to begin by referencing something that Marco said, and I may have misunderstood, but I think it's important to understand that as important as it is to preserve our history and make sure that we are preserving our landmarks and much of our historical buildings here, not just on the Upper East Side, but in New York City, we also want to be careful that we're not inadvertently reinforcing much of the segregation that we have seen in this city over many years. So I think we always need to make sure that we are striking that balance between preserving our history, but also making it know that we want people in our neighborhoods. We want new people in our neighborhoods, and we want our neighborhoods to be desegregated, because that is how we create a truly vibrant city. In terms of U-LAR, in addition to environmental impact studies, which are very important, I would like to see racial impact studies. And I know that is something that is working its way through the council right now. You know, understanding that we take things, for example, like whether or not a building is a flood plain, into consideration when we're talking about land use or zoning. Making sure that we're truly zoning for equity, so that everybody in this city has the opportunity to live in this city and to make a life of themselves.
Julie?
Well, I think the root question really gets to the social equity upzoning, the tension that exists in the city. And to me, it is a false choice, because we need to build more affordable housing. How do we do it? We need to focus on area median income, AMI. Right now, AMI is we don't have a city-based area median income. We have a regional one, which means that Putnam County, Rockland County, Westchester County all come into the equation in terms of what constitutes affordable housing. We have to change this AMI calculation, because that is perhaps one of the best ways that we will finally, once and for all, be able to build more affordable housing in New York City. Clearly, Manhattan and the Upper East Side has become unaffordable for so many New Yorkers. And so we've got to dig deep and think about how do we change it? And to me, AMI is probably one of the top things we really have to see Oregon on to make a seismic change in that.
Rebecca?
I'll start with U-LAR. So U-LAR needs to be completely overhauled and completely changed, because community-based input is not binding. We need to be binding input. We need to be an actual checker on the system, not simply people turning out to community We need to be binding input. We need to be an actual checker on the system, not simply people turning out to community board meeting and proposing something or supporting something to then have city government and other elected officials move in a different direction. So we need to start with making community input binding. Outside of that, we need to change the environmental impact statement and review process because it leaves out so many issues. We can't just look at the physical space we're going to be developing on. We need to look at the impact the development will have on local schools, on the workforce, on the local health, the local economy, what the jobs will be like coming from it. And all of that's ignored in the ULEUR process. And when it comes to historic preservation, I think of one of my favorite streets in the neighborhood, Anderson Place, right off of eighty-sixth street. So I'm a preservationist. I don't want to see more blast superstructures. I love the small character, the small walk-ups in our neighborhood. So I am a preservationist, as I said, and I want to be sure we maintain that character in our community. We have some lovely buildings here that I don't want to see torn down. But I do agree with Kim that what's concerning to hear about upholding the Upper East Side is an enclave for wealthier New Yorkers. I want my community to be home to everyone, no matter the money you make, the color of your skin, your background, anything.
Bill.
So I'll start just picking up on that point. Maybe I did miss here, but the idea that we need to preserve our community as community graph, living people, and forgive me if I did miss here, I think is wrong. We need socioeconomic diversity is what makes our city great. We need it here in our district. I also think at least Rebecca, then say a little bit about what this district is, think about the working class history of Workville. Think about what is on Island built in the image of FDR, I don't care about true middle-class housing, Michoacan housing. So I did want to make that comment. I also want to push back somewhat on what Julie said. You know, I was talking to one of our foremost zoning language leaders in our district who agreed with me that focusing on AMIs is a bit misplaced. We can always go to a development project and set the percentage of AMI. So while I do think it could be tweaked, the real issue is at what percentage are we building affordable housing? I think we need having affordable housing set aside for people leaving a home shelter system, seniors trying to age in place, and also for people making forty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars a year. Last thing, uniform land use review procedure. We need to focus on, as others have said, racial impact studies, mental health impact studies that add in, making sure that true affordability, as I've just discussed, is input in that process.
Thanks, Rebecca. And we'll start with you on the question. Now, this is like a long, you guys saw this is a very long question. So I'm going to say this question number. What really is, what is your view on the recent citywide zoning text amendment to use floor area bonuses and height increases to make improvements to transit stations, especially for elevators to increase accessibility? Why don't we just go into the question, Bill, because I think you guys are familiar with it, but that's the main issue we're talking about here.
Yeah, it's called zoning for accessibility. And I first want to acknowledge our colleague Rebecca Morfus on such a tremendous job leading on issues of accessibility, disability justice in our city. As I'm sure she'll tell you in a few minutes, twenty-five percent of our subway stations are quote-unquote accessible. That's shameful. And we're not necessarily talking about full accessibility. We're not just talking about elevators needing work. We need to talk about audible sound. We need to talk about rail in our subway systems and more. So we have an accessibility crisis in the city. Uh, I'll tell you, I'm a bit torn about this because I think this is yet another attempt to ask private developers to give us the benefit they were deemed to do so of doing what government fundamentally should be doing, is the role of government, is the role of the MTA, the state and the city to make sure all of our subway stations are accessible. It is a crying shame that they have failed to do this. It is a crying shame that the MTA capital budget conflicts five billion dollars for accessibility improvements. It is not nearly enough. So my preference would be for the government to actually do its job, make sure our subway stations have elevators that work, escalators that work, are accessible for all New Yorkers. That is the fundamental role of government. So I think zoning for accessibility raises a lot more questions than answers right now.
Okay, Rebecca.
I'm a disabled New Yorker, so this one is very personal to me. I was pushed on the subway in 2013 and that's why I have a lifelong disability. And then for over a year, I couldn't ride the train because the system's so inaccessible. As Billy said, my neighborhood data point, less than twenty-five percent of the New York City public transit system is accessible right now. And as I said at the community board and Billy echoed, it's not just accessibility with elevators, excuse me. It's escalators, it's audible announcements, it's rail, it's textured surfaces for wheelchair users, it's ramps, it's all of the above, soup to nuts. I would like to see the government fund billions of dollars of work to do this, coupling it with workforce requirements to put New Yorkers to work coming out of COVID. However, as a disabled New Yorker, I'm here to tell you, plans like that have been before and MTA always raised that budget for something else to be done. And it's far too long that we have not seen accessibility updates done in the community. And actually, last week, when we heard this proposal at the community board, a wheelchair user in our neighborhood turned out to say, why would anyone oppose this? We cannot get accessibility and it's high time that we have it. So I am supportive of this plan, but I think we need to do even more than this. We can start with this, but there are very really issues with having private developers be responsible for these elevators. It's not enough time for me to speak about it now, but I will be more so at the community board meeting. I would be reviewing this policy again.
Julie.
Yeah, so my father is disabled. He's in a wheelchair and has a mother who has a rear old and uses a stroller. I really believe that we have a major accessibility problem, as Rebecca has eloquently pointed out. This is an enormous problem and we have to fix it. The CFA zoning for accessibility is one way to do it. The challenge is because the MTA does not own the actual land where you need to put the elevators. It does require legal easement. Now, what should the give back be? The devil has the details. Okay, let's be honest. We really need to study this plan. I support CFA, as Rebecca does, but I really want to zero in on what this plan actually does. It's a recent plan. It is, um, the MTA and the Department of City Planning have been going around to community boards throughout the city to present. So this is a time for the public really to weigh in on components of it, but we once and for all absolutely unequivocally need to make all of our public transportation accessible for all.
Thanks, Julie. Kim.
Yeah, so I was nodding about that a lot as all of my colleagues here were speaking because I couldn't agree more. Um, I do support zoning for accessibility, but it is indicative of a larger problem, which is that we here in the city are often um, at the whims of state government and the MTA and they often do not invest in transportation and accessibility here in our state as much as they should. And so the city is forced into a position where they need to come up with plans to make these improvements and to create accessibility. I do wish that the government would do more in terms of demanding these accessibility changes. The reality is that any developer, any building, any company that is near transportation makes that property inevitably more valuable because people want to be near transportation hubs. They want to be near where there are subways. And so they are getting a benefit by being able to build near these transportation hubs. And so I don't think it's asking too much for them to contribute to make those transportation stations more accessible for everybody. So I do support the plan, but I would like to see us demand more, use a little more stick and a little less carrot in this plan.
Tricia.
Yeah, I agree a lot with what has been said already, but I'll just add on a couple of things to it. So I, first and foremost, I also want to echo what Billy said about Rebecca. Thank you again for your leadership on all things related to creating a more accessible city for all New Yorkers. It's so vitally important. And yes, it's very true. We need to prioritize. City, state and federal elected officials need to prioritize creating a more accessible city for all New Yorkers, period. I also have reservations, at least with the concept of privatizing or looking to our private developers to help us with what the government should be doing on its own. At a minimum, I think that we should be including ULEUR in this process. I'll say it again. I know it's been the word said most tonight. The ULEUR is the one process through which communities, city council members, rural residents can have an actual say in these developments. And so I think it's absolutely essential to have ULEUR be a part of it. I think that it is essential that this shouldn't move forward, that we include all the boroughs. It's not just Manhattan where we need accessibility. We need accessibility everywhere. And then to a nuanced issue that Rebecca pointed out, I think that when we talk about accessibility, we need to talk about the level. We need to talk about full accessibility for all of our stations, making sure that everybody has, can use each station.
Good. Thanks, Tricia. Chris.
First, I'd like to personally say thank you to Rebecca for being such a leader on this issue. She's shared her story with us all in such an authentic way and she's changed the nature of the race around disability. So I very appreciate you. Um, this is one of those sticky issues where my ideology and the reality and the ground are somewhat in conflict because I know that New Yorkers need the accessibility now and I know it's the government's responsibility, but you're not going to do it. So we're in a situation where we have to ask, what is the, what is the best option we have available to us? Um, like Tricia said, I think involving ULEUR is helpful and more than likely, we're going to have to move forward with this plan because it doesn't seem that there's any other solution at the moment for disabled New Yorkers.
Marco.
Thank you for the question, but nobody answered the question that was posed to us. Uh, the question is right here is to discuss the proposal zoning for accessibility. Uh, in this case, ULEUR process is too long and too expensive for our development and can delay its development. And this is why this special permit process was created. The proposed maximum per area ratio is four. Two floors heights is too generous and too obscure. This is the beautiful place for loopholes because some developers can get more benefits than the others. It will depend how connected is the developer and how experienced the developer's team is. That is why it's a wrong policy. The relation should be one, two, three. For every square feet provided by the developer, regardless of the type of the entrance, the developer would perceive three square feet. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's bounce back to the question five because we talked a lot about it, but I can't read. Uh, position on the two hundred and ten foot height limit for buildings on the Upper East Side, Marco. So we'll kick back a second.
Oh, I, what was the question, sir?
Uh, your position on the two hundred and ten foot height limit for Upper East Side.
I support. I think this is the great benefit to allow to negotiate affordable housing, to maintain and preserve a small business, a small business, especially popular stores, sometimes even to protect some historical districts in some areas. And that's allow basically to control the developer, not to attack the developer. The developer is not the bad guy. Right here, the bad guy is the city, the decision makers, because they don't know what are they doing. And they're coming to the city council to make decisions that they have no experience and they blame to the decision maker. When in reality, it's them the problem with the problem that they have, the deference problem. Thank you.
Chris.
The answer is still yes.
Yeah, sounds good. Uh, Chris.
Yeah, strongly support your campaign. Yeah.
Kim.
Uh, yeah, I've said this before. I have one more time committing to a specific campaign. I think about buildings in the neighborhood that I love. Our, for example, Workville, Nooker, all of which are far taller. We do need more housing in the city. I don't believe that we need super tall luxury buildings. Uh, and I'm always open to new information, but I feel like committing to and across the board, height cap on every single building can have unintended consequences. And so I, we need to learn a little bit more about it, but as of right now, I can't commit to that number.
Julie.
I guess I support it and I think we need to find additional ways to build more more tiny houses.
Rebecca.
I support the two hundred and ten foot height cap and I just want to take my remaining time to thank everyone up here for their comments around accessibility. I'm honored to have elevated this issue. Um, and for example, hopefully in the future, an event like this would be fully accessible. Uh, because right now, even if not, there was a flying stairs to get to the elevator. Uh, there are no captions on the video right now. There's no ASL here. So we need to be having these conversations around accessibility and I'm really happy to be advancing that agenda through this campaign.
Bill, last, last one on this one.
Yeah, I support that. And here's the thing, we can't be negotiating against ourselves. The next council member is going to have to go in and be very firm with the city planning commission, very firm with the next mayor and our other council members about what is that we need on the Upper East Side. Um, you know, Kim's right, we don't want ultra-luxury buildings, but right now, so many of these lots are, as I write, think about eighty-sixth and first, I think that's an Excel lot. Um, who knows right now what's happening with that property, but no, as is, there's the potential to have another super luxury, super tall building on the Upper East Side with no affordable component. Or you could have a building like we do on some parts of the Upper East Side that are, say, thirty floors and there are thirty apartments, there's an apartment per floor. So I think we also have to recognize the false choice between height and density that sometimes create, that's not a particularly dense building. So I do support the height limit. I think it's how we get some leverage to actually get the real affordability, schools, infrastructure and other needs that we so desperately need here in this region.
Thanks, Bill. Bill, we'll kick it off with you as we head into the final topic. Home stretch, guys. Small business and economic recovery. And his question is, what is your plan for the wholesale recovery of the Upper East Side? Obviously, these past fourteen months, we've all seen shops that we love close, worried that other ones would close. It's tough. Uh, your plan for recovery on the Upper East Side, small business post pandemic, plus a little bit of a look at the long-term view regionally.
Yeah, so you're right. We've had a vacancy crisis here on the Upper East Side and it's not just because of COVID. Even before COVID, one of ours is COVID's one double zero two one, had the second most retail vacancies in all of New York City. So what are we going to do about that? First, our small business owners, our mom and pops desperately need a hand. They're facing landlords who are often, I think, too greedy, jacking up the rent, kicking them out, keeping the storefront vacant for months, if not years. We've all seen that story play out. So we need the government, I think, to step in and actually pass legislation that's going to help. So where do we start? I really like council member Helen Rosenfeld's bill. This is called storefront bill of rights that would require landlords to give notice, under twenty days' notice uh, to tenants uh, about whether they're going to renew their lease. You get tenants a one-year right of renewal. We also need to do other things around simplifying business for small businesses. Uh, one thing, citywide permit would help. We need to address the commercial rent tax, which hits businesses south of ninety-sixth street. Uh, so I support legislation that would reform or repeal it uh, for businesses that pay annual rents of a million dollars or less. Uh, and I think let's get creative around ideas like having a city seamless. Uh, restaurants are paying huge fees to seamless and Uber Eats and others. The city could get into this business, drive down those fees and help our neighborhood restaurants. Those are some ideas. I think in the next question, I'll have a chance to speak about a few more.
All right, let's head on to Rebecca on that same question about recovery after the pandemic, not after, during, after, it's still ongoing.
During, in the midst.
Yeah.
For the still little pandemic, if you're not vaccinated, public service announcement. Don't take that out of my time.
No, man, I'm ready to go.
Now on small businesses. So during COVID, you know, we've lost some of our able-bodied small businesses in the neighborhood. But long before, we were already seeing the storefront vacancy issue just impaling in our community. And so what we need to do is first, support businesses that have been able to hold off, put direct money in their hands, work with small business services to put grants on the table that don't need to be repaid, to help businesses stay open while we continue to be in the pandemic and move towards reopening. Outside of that, we need to pass commercial rent control. So many of these mom and pops sign leases and face this door, but get rent increases that they can't shoulder even long before and long after COVID. So we need to do that. We need to pass the small business job survival act. Small businesses are one of our biggest employers here in the city of New York. Think about the restaurant industry, for example, and how many people it employs and supports and all of those families. So we need to be passing that legislation. And outside of that, we need to get creative. We need to be working with Albany to pass penalties for landlords that keep storefronts purposely off the market. We need to change the tax loopholes that allow them to take that vacancy off on their taxes and harm our communities with an empty storefront because also think, this relates back to public safety, as Tricia said. When you revive our communities with people on the streets, businesses open, that fosters public safety as well.
Julie.
Uh, we need a three-pronged approach, city, state and federal. At the city level, we need to lower fines and all small businesses. I did that formerly as a mission of consumer affairs. Every agency needs to do it. The city should provide back office space to small businesses to help with them on that. We, three, we need to focus on public safety to bring tourism back because tourism accounts for twenty-five percent of bar and restaurant sales. And we need to eradicate the commercial rent tax. On the state level, we need to do what we did after nine eleven, which is a sales tax holiday. It works. It helps these small businesses and we should be doing that. And then at the federal level, there is a tremendous amount of funds left in PPP loans. Right now, the city's small business services agency is not connecting enough small businesses. I speak every day to small businesses and connect them myself. That's absurd. We need there to be a dedicated team at the federal and city level that is in constant contact to get more of our small businesses, the federal aid that is already there, but that they're not able to access.
Kim.
Yeah, so this is an issue that is particularly important to me. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, I started a group called Workville by Local. Um, because I saw the effect that disturbance we're having on our neighborhoods and I wanted to help promote and protect our local mom and pops. We hosted a small business walking tour of the neighborhood shortly before the pandemic to try to promote these businesses to our neighbors. Um, in terms of what the city needs to do, I think first and foremost, we need to help our small businesses through this pandemic and that means micro loans, it means grants, hopefully coming from some of the federal money that we have gotten um, in response to the pandemic. Um, but I think Julie is right. I talked to small business owners who say that the extent of the city's help was to give them a list of banks who were doing PPP loans and that was it. Um, and many of them did end up getting help, but they are now on the email list of all of these banks for various loan offers. So what we need is liaisons who can work directly with these small business owners to figure out which loans and which grants are most appropriate for them and then get them connected. Um, I also support the small business job survival act, which would allow local mom and pops to be able to negotiate more fairly with their landlords and hopefully, you know, keep them in their establishments so that we don't see all of these empty storefronts because of rising rents.
Tricia.
Yeah, so you've heard the statistic time and time again. You know that over a third of our small businesses are going to close or have closed because of the pandemic. We know that even as people are starting to venture out, we pack into the city without masks, uh, that our small businesses are still going to suffer long, uh, long after everybody's back to relatively normal. Uh, and I wish that I could say that if it was one bill, I wish that I could say that with one person in the city council that we could save our small businesses. But the truth is, is that it will take efforts on the city, state and federal level to keep those who are still able to stay alive, to keep them, to keep them thriving. So I echo what a lot of the other candidates have said. I believe that we should be passing the small business job survival act. I will just add that I did propose a legacy small business program of my own that would freeze the rents of truly unique small businesses that add so much more than just a tenant to our brick and mortar businesses, uh, storefronts over here. I believe that we need direct funding. Um, I will also say that we need to increase protections for our small businesses against the predatory behavior of landlords who are harassing tenants, who are harassing our small businesses, trying to kick them out just to keep a vacant storefront out there and to sell their building or to find someone to, to pay a higher rent. This is something that we need to do to further protect those who are most vulnerable and those are our small businesses.
Chris, from the small business job survival act, thanks. I agree with you.
Yes, everything has been said here and especially when I say Tricia and Kim for their personal efforts on behalf of small businesses over the past years. And I really want to focus on what Julie brought up, which is the importance of connecting small businesses to federal funds. Um, the truth of the matter is there's a lot that the city council simply can't do because there's a finite budget. And on our own, we're not going to save the small businesses and we have a broken, a broken system through which we're not really connecting a lot of these businesses to the resources that they need to supply. So we need to ensure that we are getting those resources to them immediately because everyday matters in the life of the small business and we're seeing increasing vacancies. And as Tricia was just talking about, uh, we, we need to crack down on predatory landlords who are forcing small businesses out for financial gain. Uh, we're going to lose the general character of this neighborhood. The reason why a lot of people live here is because of this local life. So our, we need to be laser focused on ensuring that small businesses survive and new small businesses are able to open.
Time.
Marco, last one.
Uh, thank you. My plan should be first to vaccinate all the population. With the federal government economic relief, we need to put the money in the right hands. Delay fines fees for the small business. We need to have an assessment of the business conditions underneath. We need to lower the rent rate in the subway. We need to lower the rent rate in the subway and parks and to reduce attacks against antisemitism and Asian attacks and street crimes. And never wait every three months the outdoor dining structure. Thank you.
Okay, I think a lot of, like, almost everybody touched on the retail crisis. I mean, you feel like you did that and you should talk more about it or?
You should like the part where you asked us on fever business.
Okay.
Beer, beer, only mine. Beer, beer, business.
Yeah, there's definitely a couple. I was worried about Ophlannicans by me and then Reo. I was, I was, because they have, um, they have popcorn shrimp and it's like ridiculous. I love it. I know, it's a horrible thing, but this is what I mean though, right?
Yeah.
These are the little things that make you love or love.
Yeah, a neighborhood institution for how many years and now we're gone. Yeah.
Well, you know what, since since we're kind of talking about that, I'm, let's do a kind of a, like, you know, a wild part here. Let's talk about outdoor structures. I think I believe it ends in September. Do we keep going, right?
Yeah, I think we do. I mean, I I I do think that we have to be careful. We have always, as I said before, prioritize accessibility. We need to make sure that our streets are still usable and our streets are still usable for people with wheelchairs. I do not think, um, that these structures belong on every street permanently, but I, but I do think that we, that past the fall, we are still going to be in this. I'm just going to quickly say, because I know we're not talking about it anymore, but I think that we do need to be creative about our ideas for how to build these vacant storefronts. And I do think that, um, I'm very proud to have the endorsement of our former Manhattan Chamber of Commerce president, Nancy Flager, a proud Upper East Sider. Because of this very issue, we've been talking a lot about vacant storefronts, how we create smaller spaces, how we, how we, uh, try to entice entrepreneurs and small businesses to fill these spaces. We do not need any large block, block-sized Dwayne Reed spaces or TD banks that are the only thing that can fill those spaces. We need to be thinking creatively about how to support our entrepreneurs and bring them back to our city, bring them back to our neighborhood.
Last one.
For outdoor dining, to me, it's about accessibility. I brought it up when we mentioned this in the community board recently, talking about the city council extending the program. Um, there are so many streets in our community throughout the city where if you're a wheelchair user, if you're a walker user, if you're a parent with a stroller, you can't fit on the public sidewalk. Me, with my pain, based on my mobility, maybe I can take that step off the curb, but then we're putting pedestrians at risk by having them walk in traffic. So when we continue this program, because it has helped so many small businesses survive, let's be honest about that, it's been a lifeline for them during COVID. But we can't have their support and help for them, be it the expense of pedestrians, seniors, disabled, New Yorkers, parents, anyone. So I want to be sure that when we continue this program going forward, after it ends, as it is now, its current form in September, that we have much stronger accessibility requirements, we have much stronger street hate rules around it. Um, right now, it's just the regular eight-foot DOT rule that applies, where from the distance to the curb has to be eight feet of pedestrian space. But we all see it, the same kind of corridor, the east eighties, you can't even fit three feet of light paint most often. So we absolutely have to have those issues taken into account.
Marco, thoughts? I, you, you touched on it for a second.
Yes, uh, now I touch a little deeper. Uh, I think, I think the issue is to support these outdoor dining structures. It's anti-Semitic, I mean, because as an architect, I know the rules and relations that have to build. And all these structures are precarious in the in the middle of the street, that any flood, any strong winds, they can demolish, they can bring, they can completely, uh, uh, make them pieces. And those pieces will be flying in our neighborhood, destroying the 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 buildings, killing people and sometimes probably even hurt the people outside. And I think we have to assess the outdoor structure time to time and see if it's actually they need to have. Remember that right now, the government released a lot of money for PPE. Thank you.
Kim?
Yeah, so I love outdoor dining. I do want to see it continue. Um, I echo the concerns of of so many other folks here, obviously with regards to accessibility, making sure not just that folks can get by on the street, but that the outdoor dining spaces themselves are accessible to people in in wheelchairs um, and folks with mobility issues, as well as the safety concerns that that Marco brought up. Um, but I do think it's a program that's been a lifeline for so many small businesses and I think it is something that is absolutely worth continuing. Um, and I will just say, you know, hearing Roger talk about Ophlannicans sort of made me think about, you know, for example, a local restaurant in my neighborhood where my now husband and I, for the first time, talked about getting there and realized that saving these businesses, it's not just, um, an economic proposal. It's about an emotional connection that we have to so many of these places. Um, that's why they're important to us. And I think that's why it is so important that we do everything in our power, um, to try to protect and save so many of these beloved local mom and pops that we have.
Billy?
So as to point the outdoor dining program, I think we've got to get it right. We belong to a very tough area, it's supposed to be a lifeline for businesses. But this is why I support the director of the public realm to try to coordinate, consolidate agencies, to bring some sense to what the structures are supposed to look like, to make sure there is accessibility on our streets. Um, but this is all interconnected to what we've been talking about. I, Reg J Jacob should be there, having eyes on the street, having a sense of community, a sense of place that does contribute to public safety. I think these outdoor dining structures have brought that eye, the eyes and energy onto the street. I think it's incredibly important. And if I may, with my remaining time, just talk about what through about these vacancies. One, I think we need to do OPAC, Open Culture, look at, uh, plugging in the arts to some of these vacancies and also looking at whether any of them could be helpful for expanding 3K, pre-K, universal childcare. Two, I think we need a vacancy tax on landlords that are kicking out their tenants and not in a good faith way, uh, filling the vacancies. And this brings me to the last point. We have a rig system, two, for too many landlords, they benefit from the tax code for keeping a property vacant. Or even worse, this connects to issues with Carita here. If it's in the bottom 10 building, they may get vacant so that they can ultimately carry on the building and put up a second one.
Julie?
So I agree we should keep outdoor dining. I completely agree that we have to address accessibility issues and other issues and that absolutely has to happen. On retail vacancy, we actually have double the amount of vacant retail space in the past 10 years. So this was a problem before COVID. It has clearly been exacerbated by COVID. We had the same problem after 9/11 downtown and Project created a program called Art Downtown after 9/11, where we programmed vacant, uh, retail spaces with cultural uses. We've, uh, created gallery spaces, artist studios and programmed them. We should also look in the Upper East Side and do that, but also look at 3K, 3K in particular, we have three sites for on the Upper East Side, totally unacceptable, so we need to look at that. We should look at co-working spaces. Can we make these spaces co-working spaces? We have to think outside of the box in terms of what we can do. And then lastly, I do believe, um, we need our city's tourism arm, NYC and company, I used to serve as their executive board, they offered you the amount more to promote our small businesses on the Upper East Side. Right now, they're doing a $30 million tourism campaign, but we need things that are also more hyper local and targeted specifically to small businesses.
Chris, follow up on this one?
Sure. Uh, let's start with, uh, open dining. So I agree entirely with Rebecca. Um, my sister has a degenerative tissue disorder, so sometimes she's able to walk, sometimes she's not able to walk. And these, uh, the way the streets are carved and they're laid out, it would be impossible to navigate certain streets at all on certain days for her. Uh, and also, we're, we're in a community with an extremely large senior population. Seniors should not be having to trip over chairs in the streets. So there, there is a way to, uh, sustain this, but we need to create a, a more standardized system that very clearly makes room for people who need to use the streets. And, uh, on the vacancy that Julie was just saying, this problem weighed three days ago, but it's, uh, and I think that we have a tendency to talk about it in relation to COVID because it exacerbated and sped it up so much. But in reality, this was the direction our economy has been going for the entirety of the time that I've lived in New York. So we, we need to have real conversations about the type of economy that we want to rebuild because if we build back the exact same system we had before, we're going to end up with lots of big box stores and lots of vacant storefronts.
All right, guys, we're going to do one more question and then we'll have some closing statements. Uh, this, this has been wonderful. So one state education, real quick, we'll start with Chris. What do you think about the district thing, uh, the district? I always have trouble with that word. I can't say a rhythm, synonym. Sym, yeah, yeah. What's the synonym for synonym? Okay. Um, what, the school district for middle and high school? And also, if you can touch a little bit, I know this is something I, as a graduate of students of high school, I know this, what should be done about the SH SAT?
Um, I, uh, I take a position on the SH SAT that, uh, maybe a little conversational. I, I oppose it. I think it increases the amount of segregation in our system and I don't believe it's a metric for children. Uh, I actually come from an unusual educational background. I was homeschooled until college. And part of the reason for that is that, um, we were not able to trust the public school systems right or up with, I, my welfare and my education. And we need to ensure that, um, we're proper funding our education system. There's a series of reforms that need to be implemented around equity. And we, we're not doing right by our kids, right? Some of the best schools in the city are on the Upper East Side, but we still deal with high levels of segregation. And in, until we desegregate the schools, we're, we're teaching children the color of their skin. It has something to do with their value. And until we change the systems that, um, that assess our children's academic performance to be reflective of their merit and not, um, frankly predetermined, uh, outcomes based on the resources they had access to before they took the test.
Tom?
Julie?
So when I chaired the community board one after 9/11, I'm proud to have led the charge to build three new public schools, including the city's first green school. Um, in terms of the question you asked, Roger, first of all, I want to start with GNT programs of the youngest ages. I support GNT. I think they need to be expanded though, to a more diverse and wider audience throughout the whole city, not just this district, but citywide. Unspecialized high schools, I believe the test should be one component, along with essays, along with teacher recommendations, along with grades. You can't just have a test. I believe we need to diversify these schools and one way to do that is to keep the test, but have it as one of the components. Um, and I do also want to say, I'm really proud in this race to have the endorsement of the teachers union and CSA, which represents, um, our principals, our administrators because of my two-decade track record working on education issues.
Bill?
I'm proud to have the endorsement in this race of students and kids back. Kids back is from public school parents that are fighting for equity, smaller class sizes and better funding in our schools. I'm also proud to have the endorsement of students throughout our district, including ones, one of the only black students at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Who can tell you their self, what it's like to be one of the only black students at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Um, we have deeply segregated high schools and to a certain extent, middle schools because of school screens. Some of these screens are, I think, very clearly causing that segregation, such as looking at lateness, for example, as a measure. Um, but, but other screens are also failing as well. So I think we have to listen to our children and even, uh, this may surprise a lot of people, even their parents, who are also agreeing that we need to diversify our schools, like Eleanor Roosevelt. And if you ask the principal at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, this is something that he's been pushing for years. Uh, on the SH SAT, I agree with Julie, you know, it shouldn't just come down to one test. Uh, I think that's incredibly unfair to a student. Uh, I think a more holistic measure is not just fair, it's going to result in a more diverse, uh, specialized, uh, high school system. I think it's Stuyvesant where, uh, only eight of the students, uh, are black. Um, we should all be disturbed by that. We should all be trying to find adequate solutions.
Yeah, so to, to echo a lot of what Billy, uh, briefly just said, I, I agree, the notion that one test taken at one time should dictate your educational future is absurd to me. Um, I believe other factors need to be taken into account. I got a key powers as a proposal on this that would, uh, keep the test, but also include, um, other factors as well, including, uh, you know, admitting a certain percentage of top students at every school in the, uh, city, which I think would be a way to help segregate our schools and give all kids an opportunity, uh, to have some of the best educations. But I also think operating from a scarcity model, um, is a problem. This notion that we have this limited number of, quote unquote, really good schools and that kids are forced into the situation where they have to compete with each other to get into these schools is terrible. We need to be investing in our public education. We need to be investing so that all of our schools are considered good schools. And so there isn't this incredible competition between all of our students, which creates inevitable tension, uh, between parents, between students. Um, so I believe that we need to be investing in education, but to the specific question about the test, now, I do not think that one test should determine whether or not a child gets into a school and determines their educational future.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. One test is wrong. We need smaller classes. We need to build more classes. We need universal literacy by the third grade. We need to have, uh, remedial classes, especially after the pandemic. When the schools are open, I think we would have a big deficit of, uh, from our children's education because most of them, I don't think they will be very successful watching the classes on the internet. I think we really need aplomb for them. Thank you.
Rebecca?
I also support changes to the specialized high school entrance exam. I think the one test metric just disenfranchises so many students. It creates a great deal of stress as well in students without one test to be what gets you into a few of these completely good schools. One of the biggest, biggest powers of the city councils are budget and I want to use that budget to have a base statement of values and principles, where we're valuing students, we're valuing educators. Because we can't talk about students without talking about teachers, the adults in their building and supporting them as well. So I want us to use the foundation aid, the billions of dollars finally being released from Albany to more equitably fund schools. There are some communities like ours that can raise billions of dollars from strong parent-teacher networks and not every community has that. And that's why you see communities without before and after school programs, without arts programs, STEM, without social workers in every school, school nurses. So we need to also be looking at our budget as a part of desegregating schools and how we're giving more money to schools in black and brown communities and low-income communities that don't have textbooks, that don't have the basic needs that so many students in our neighborhood take for granted. And outside of that, I agree with something Kim said, how we can't just force students to refuse coveted good schools. Every school should be a palace. Every school should be a place where every New York child can get a good education. And without that, we're setting the students up for failure. And I firmly believe every student can succeed, but right now, our system is infillling up.
Tricia?
And so as a parent and as a former public school social worker, I, I will say that I feel very passionately about, uh, our schools and our public school education system. I think that ultimately, we need to be working off of this idea and, which isn't as much of an idea as it is in law, that every child, regardless of his or her or their ability, must have the, their academic needs met in our public school system. And right now, we are failing most of our students, um, truly. Um, I, I think that when it comes to disparities in our, our education system, which Kim and Rebecca have talked about, I 100% agree. I can say firsthand that they are there. I also think that when it comes to the specific question of specialized school, high schools, um, I think that we do need to look, take a portfolio approach to this, looking at, uh, test scores, looking at teacher recommendations, looking at attendance, looking at a whole wide range of factors. I agree with Marco that class size matters and that when we have smaller class sizes, we're able to pay our students more individualized care. And I will just say that at the end of the day, I believe very truly deeply that, that diversity matters, that, that, um, we are stronger when we are more diverse. But I truly believe that that happens through housing policy, frankly. And I think that so much of this comes back to how do we create diverse communities and it doesn't happen unless we rebuild affordability. Finally, I'm just going to say that, again, as a public school social worker, I am particularly sensitive to our students who have IEPs. And our, um, I've spoken to parents every day whose students have not had their IEPs met. Um, they are more like suggestions, uh, right now in our city than actual mandates, which is wrong. Um, and we really need to be thinking about as we build a stronger and I hope, and I hope more equitable education system, that we really prioritize the needs of those students who have specialized learning needs.
Perfect. Wow. Yeah, it's, I'll tell you, you guys want to see some interesting comments go on like, you know, Facebook page or Stuyvesant or Tech Box Science. I could personally attest, uh, yeah, it's, it's interesting. It really, it's, it's, boy, what a, what a time. All right, here we go. Uh, everyone, uh, please describe your role in a preservation effort you were involved in before this particular run through August. Pinpoint your top two accomplishments that you have tangibly benefited this district and the city at large. And I guess let's go back to the original plan. You want to start with, we'll go back to Alpha and Omega, start with Billy.
Great. So one effort that I was proud to be part of in standing shoulder-to-shoulder with, uh, public housing residents at Holmes Houses and Isaac's Houses, uh, was opposing the Fettner Infra, uh, project. Uh, this was a plan to take a playground away, um, from NICA tenants and put up a super tall building, uh, that had a huge amount of art, a lot of luxury apartments. Um, this was wrong for several reasons, but one of which was it was essentially taking the scarce open space that we have in our neighborhood, we've already talked about it. Uh, but more importantly, taking away open space from public housing residents to fund public housing needs, a need that the government already has an obligation to fulfill. Uh, we stopped this at the community board level, passed resolutions, we stood shoulder-to-shoulder with NICA. Um, I'm really proud to have been a part of that. A couple of accomplishments. One is I've been at the forefront of a lot of fights over open space and how we use our outdoor open space. Uh, most recently advocating for pedestrianizing the Queensboro Bridge, Southside Roadways, something that we're finally doing to make it a more walkable, bikeable bridge. It's going to be crucial to people who rely on that bridge to get to their work. It's going to be crucial for people who are just trying to go burrow to burrow. Uh, and then another thing that I'm very proud of is constituent services. Uh, whether it's my role as a junior board member of the Isaac Center, helping people in need, helping their seniors spend, or whether it's responding to constituents, um, simply coming in and say, hey, you know, I've got a surprise medical building issue, I need some help. And I'm able to deliver that help to people. I'm incredibly proud, uh, to have been able to do that, whether it's as a community board member, uh, someone serving on the Isaac Center Junior Board, uh, or other roles, to be serving our neighbors in need. And I'm proud because I think that is the key role of a city council member. Constituent services is the number one, uh, part of the job, you know. You know, Mayor, we've already said, there's no democratic or republican way of cleaning the street. And that's how I feel about a lot of the most basic fundamental duties of being a city council member. That's why I'd be proud and honored to serve as your municipal council member.
Thanks a lot, Bill. Rebecca, you're up.
I'm proud to report to the Holmes Isaac Coalition, community members in NYCHA at Holmes and Isaac's to oppose the Fettner infill project. Our community was facing the very first infill proposal. Infill is where NYCHA takes public land, in this case, it was a children's park, to put up market-ready private development, where it wouldn't be saved for residents in Holmes and Isaac's now, dealing with unhavocable apartments that need serious repairs. And so I'm proud to have authored resolutions. I'm proud to have marched with the coalition to Gracie Mansion, who have designed flyers, who have helped facilitate meetings they did to help oppose this project. And I'm proud that all of us together, with people here now, with me, that we were able to be back at these sources of privatization in NYCHA, of this displacement of NYCHA tenants and neighbors in our community. So that's a very big campaign on preservation I'm proud to have been a part of. Outside of that, for other tangible accomplishments in the community, for me, honestly, it's about accessibility, how I've injected into every conversation at the community board. When we talk about buses, I'm bringing up accessibility with our kneeling buses. That's one of the only accessible forms of transportation for so many community members. When we talk about bike lanes, when we talk about placard reviews and people conflating handicap parking permits with placard reviews from other city agencies and New Yorkers. I'm also really proud of the work I've done to promote safer communities and safer work environments. It's not something that has been hyperlocal to this community, but it was a law I got passed down at City Hall called the Construction Safety Act, which implemented worker safety training, mostly for non-union undocumented New Yorkers that were dying at alarming rates on construction projects and unsafe constructions, not only hurts workers, but it hurts community members. Where just two years ago, a woman in our neighborhood was hit by a beam falling off the side of an unsafe development down in Newtown. And also on ADA Street a few years back, where a worker lost their life on a market rate luxury housing project. So it's real in our community, and I'm proud to have passed that law down at City Hall to protect workers.
Thanks, Rebecca. I think we're going about like a lot of two on this one. So Julie.
So you first asked about a preservation effort that we have been involved in. So I'm going to focus on one that I did many years ago, the rezoning of Morethan Tribeca, which I did as chair of community board one. We rezone Morethan Tribeca to preserve its contextual character, but also to build affordable housing and to limit big box retail. Because we were able to limit the square footage of retail so that we were really able to promote the mom and pops. And that was used as a model years later on the Upper West Side, but then followed our suit and did the same thing. I also am a longtime board member of the Municipal Arts Society. We were involved along, obviously, with Friends, who is the leader on this of the Upper East Side Historic District and expanding it into 75 buildings. In terms of the proudest two accomplishments that have helped the district and the city, I'm going to focus on two. First is Commissioner of Consumer Affairs. I lowered fines on small businesses by one-third. So you heard about Sam Mateo's earlier. That's a business, and we're able to lower fines, allow them to cure the violation first. We helped hundreds of small businesses, and we increased consumer restitution by 70%, meaning thousands of people on the Upper East Side got more money back. I also launched Champaign-Sixth League Law and created NYC Kids Rise and exceeded 13,000 kids with a college savings account. And then secondly, the census. I was a city census director. We partnered with groups like Stanley Isaac Center to have a record response of the census. We beat almost every other major city, and that specifically delivered $2,600 of benefits per person on the East Side, $6,000 per family on the census.
Thanks, Julie. Kim, you're up.
So in terms of a preservation effort, I was really proud to offer testimony and supported landmarking 412 East State Fifth Street. It's a street that I used to live on, and it's one of the few remaining wood houses in all of Manhattan. Obviously, they don't open anymore because of the fire risk, but this is a building that I used to walk by every day, that I absolutely loved. And when I found out that it was on the list to potentially be considered a landmark, I not only submitted testimony and support, but I tried to rally the community around it. I sent out emails and encouraged other people to submit testimony as well. So I was extremely glad to find out that it ultimately was landmarked. And I think that is something that I'm very proud of in terms of preservation in the city. In terms of accomplishments that I am proud of overall, I mentioned this before, but my work in founding Yorkville by Local, I'm very proud of that effort. That came out of a forum that I hosted with my co-district leader, Bed Wetzler, talking about making storefronts. And we realized that there were very little resources for small business owners in terms of really promoting and protecting. And I had done work with By Local East Harlem as well. And so we utilized their model to create one for Yorkville, which has been extremely successful. Had several small business owners who have given testimonials in support of our campaign and have specifically mentioned Yorkville by Local is something that has demonstrably helped their business in the last couple of years. So I'm extremely proud of that. The other thing I'm very proud of is my work as legislative committee chair for New Yorkers Against Gun Violence. I lobbied at the legislature in Albany in support of Nicholas's law, which would require that any guns that are in a home with a child be locked away. And so when that bill finally passed in 2019, due to the advocacy of others like New Yorkers Against Gun Violence, I was extremely proud. And I know for a fact that people in this city, children in this city, are safer because of that bill that we advocated for and lobbied for so hard. So those are the things that I am most proud of here.
Thanks, Kim. Tricia.
So if you know me, then you know that I can't generally get through one conversation without talking about our East River Esplanade. For me, taking care of the Esplanade has not been a piece of advocacy. It's been a part of who I am, it's a part of who my family is. We have spent over a decade fighting to preserve this open space. As deputy chief of staff to Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, as the co-chair of the Parks and Waterfront Committee, as the former board member of Friends of the East River Esplanade, you name the role, I've done it. When it comes to advocating for this waterfront, I was the first person on site when the Esplanade collapsed. Last summer in July, I personally taped off the area while Parks Committee member, Parks employees came to meet me and making sure that everybody kept the area safe. I will continue to fight until we have a waterfront that our community needs and deserves, period. When it comes to preservation, I'm very proud to have joined Billy, Rebecca, and Marco in fighting against the privatization of NYCHA. I don't think that we can emphasize enough how bad of a precedent this sets when the city thinks that it can privatize and sell off its biggest priority to the highest bidder. I will continue to fight against privatization and continue to fight to hold government officials accountable for funding NYCHA and keeping these tenants safe. Finally, again, I will say that as deputy chief of staff to Congresswoman Carolyn Maloney, one of my biggest accomplishments I am forever going to be proud of is a small but meaningful role that I played in getting through Phase One of Second Avenue subway. As Carolyn's deputy chief of staff, I held meetings. We held weekly, if not daily, meetings with MTA officials. We stood behind our small businesses, helped them rally, helped create different programming opportunities to help them survive. Held countless RAT academies. I can't even tell you how many that we held, trying to keep our neighborhood going, trying to get them to believe in government again, and believe that we can get something as large as a Second Avenue subway finish. So I'm very proud of that.
Christopher Sosa.
Yes. Yeah. It was a two-part question, I believe. The first was on preservation.
Do you want me to read yours?
I think, I think, yeah. So on the first, in my previous life before government, I was a full-time journalist, and also I worked in advocacy. And one of the organizations I worked for focused on issues including wildlife preservation, open space preservation, and infrastructure preservation and improvements, including for people who are in water insecure places. So that was a huge part of my life. In terms of specific accomplishments that apply to New Yorkers, there are two that I'm especially proud of. One is the passage of the New York State Dream Act. I worked in the Democratic Caucus of the New York State Senate. And as most of you know, the original sponsor of that bill died suddenly of undiagnosed leukemia. And after his passage, the, after he passed the passage of that bill, was somewhat in question because it, of course, needed following the school lead sponsor and so forth. So I served on a team that got the law over the finish line. And now thousands of kids are going to college who previously would not have been able to under the old system. In addition to that, I worked with CUNY Law School on a pilot program for district offices that brought housing and immigration attorneys for free to residents who are not able to afford them. It was a really successful program, and I look forward to implementing it in my own office. Just I'd be lucky.
Perfect. And last but not least, to wrap it up, okay, Mr. Marco, go for it.
Thank you. As an architect, expert in historical preservation, with my skill, I was involved in fighting to serve our historical and cultural heritage in our community for 12 years. As a member of the community, eh, committee, Madam, I'm sorry. One project I was involved was the Park Avenue Historical District, whose director is Michelle Bearmaus. This historical district covered from 79th Street to 86th Street. I was, I am proud that I testified a landmark commission for this part, in this part, not this project. I have to mention two more things now. I'm the only one candidate that presented a new Brazilian esplanade. Because right now, the section that is called Esplanade between every first street to 62nd Street, this is a law, and this is wrong. And they have been putting just only flowers, and the conditions are extremely serious. What I'm proposing is to build a symbol of 11 feet. That is the femur required in order to avoid the flooding and erosion of the FDR, as well as some buildings. In addition, on the top of that, we used to, they were used to be the path, I'm going to put a cycle, bicycles, exercise place. And on the top of that, continue the deck. I'm planning to build and send a view for the whole East Side of the, of our district, creating more spaces for our community, which basically most of them, eh, some of them, they already mentioned that we have a crisis, but not on that solution. That's my solution for that part. With respect with.
About 30 seconds.
Oh. With respect to NYCHA, I'm the only one that I have a plan for affordable housing. Increasing density, I can improve the quality of life of 534 people and reach 2,056 affordable units. And with that decision, I will, I will save millions of dollars from the taxpayers in order to buy vacant lot.
Thank you very much, Marco. Well, would you like to have some closing remarks?
Yes. Roger, I have three comments. Roger, you've done an outstanding job.
Oh, thanks.
It's been like a marathon, but you've let us through it.
All right. It was a blast, and nobody talks about food.
We are so grateful that Joanna picked you out. She said, we've got to get Roger.
Oh, yeah.
So thank you, Joanna. And finally, for our candidates, I think people living in District Five can rest assured that there will be a great council member. And you, you know, you wish, I wish that each and every one of you could do, could take over the job. But reality being what it is, but I just felt so good about the great feeling between the candidates and the spirit of cooperation that exists. And I think, I think it bodes well for the future. And I know all of you will stay involved. I'm convinced of that. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, and thank our co-sponsors for this, for this wonderful event.